Mr. Pimentel, thank you very much. Next speaker will be Reverend J. Robert Mopin. Reverend Mopin, you... And then after Reverend Mopin will be Scott Leahy. And Reverend Mopin, you have an individual that's donating a tiny... You save a little extra time beyond two minutes.
I'd have gotten here faster, Mr. Mayor, but the front row doesn't belong to the public anymore. I think we should open those seats back up. They belong to us. Where can I begin? I think about Daniel. You know, when he was at the feast of Balsasar and the handwriting appeared on the wall, said, "Many, many, take all apart, and I've weighed your kingdom in the balances. You've been weighed in the balance and found wanting." That's the problem. These last few weeks and days haven't been a joy, certainly as someone who's had a front-row seat to some of these negotiations. Am I relieved that AFSMI has reached a point of agreement with the city? In some ways, yes. But in most ways, no. This is not a satisfactory agreement. This is just buying time. It's just buying time. And I don't know how much longer our employee groups will have their good faith exploited by members of the city's administration, the labor negotiating team, and folks on the city council. It's not right. The cuts to these employees are not right. We talked of a plan to extend the time period for negotiations to try to find money. I know there's some fears within the unions about that. Understandable fears. But the fact remains that there probably is room in terms of the lobbying funds, in terms of travel, in terms of a lot of money that the city spends. It could be reverted to pay for employee raises. We don't know what's there because the city hasn't really taken a serious look to see what can be cut and not from employees in a way to benefit them. So this is the weakest agreement that I think is possible, and I'm very disappointed. I think the city has shown a tremendous lack of political will in terms of a commitment to our employee groups. More can be done. If there's one thing certainly that the council takes away from this, you all are the winners, is that we need to reform the way that this city negotiates. The very conversations that take place, the people that are at the tables. There needs to be a systemic change so that we don't reach these points of contention to make sure that we can carve out something that's good for employees. I hope the employees learn something. This contract is not good. Some of you jumped the gun, you know? I don't know what has happened in the House of Labor, and I hope we can fix it. You know, excuse me, council, while I preach to the choir for a minute. But, you know, in the old days of labor, we would sing solidarity forever for a reason. But when unions jump the gun and there are separate agreements that happen before all the facts are at the table, then some people get the short end of the stick. And that's exactly what is taking place. So we have to rethink the way that Phoenix does its labor negotiations, especially when we have a majority of people on the council that profess to be friends of labor. And I don't know how it happens. I've talked to people in fire, in police, all of our rank-and-file folks that have a firm belief that there is corruption at almost every level managerially within the city of Phoenix. And I'm inclined to believe them. And I don't know what it's going to take to fix that, whether it's just simply restructuring the way we negotiate our labor contracts. I think I had a couple cards for a little extra time, if I'm not mistaken.
You've reached your four minutes, so finish your thought.
Okay.
I counted for both cards, please.
Or whether or not we need to take a look at restructuring the very government of our city. I don't know if our council-manager system will work anymore. I have no confidence in the current system that we have in place. And whether that can come about sooner or later, I certainly think that under a different system, it would allow the friends of labor to behave as friends of labor, and it would allow you, Mr. Mayor, whomever occupies that seat, perhaps under a strong mayor system, to take a firm stance and to stand up for rank-and-file folks and make sure that contracts are healthy.
Thank you very much.
This is a stopgap for a systemic problem. I'm just about done.
Thank you.
I agree with Councilman DeCecio in one area, and I'll tell you this: When the budget crisis expands, when the tax, property tax crisis expands, when the pension crisis comes to a head, what are employees going to do? That is a serious question that we have to ask, and it's one that the city can't answer. So it's a minor victory today, yes. You get to keep your jobs. But this is about quality and dignity, and as far as I'm concerned, the council has just defecated on the dignity of the city workers.
Thank you very much, Reverend Mopin. Thank you very much, Scott Leahy. Could you just provide testimony? Please come forward. Good to see you. You have a few cards donating to you, so you have up to six minutes. That's okay?
I appreciate you all being here, and I appreciate each one of you because I know that you are working hard to make the right decisions. Can't be easy, taking all the guff that you have, but it doesn't seem like we're all working together here. And I'm very discouraged about the union labor, or the unions, that have caved in too early here. You really didn't help our cause. We were holding out because it's not a done deal yet. It is now, probably, but maybe not. I'm not sure. I just think that we should have stayed together as a union of employees, all of us. We should have had better communication. But each one of you, you have... Every one of you has an important role, and you all have a lot of great ideas, I've heard since I've been watching the hearings. I'm sure you could have raised 16.5 million from these. Why hasn't it happened? I don't understand the disconnect. I mean, we're all right here together, aren't we? This is the community we're talking about. I mean, the very strength of this city is right here. The decisions that are going to be made are going to affect the very core that is spoken of, and that's the city of Phoenix workforce. We are the core. We are the people that carry it out, right? You've got to be on our side. How can you say you're not? And how can you say you're not on our side? We're providing the services. We're the strength. We are the face of the mission, right? I represent both. First of all, let me tell you my name. Scott Leahy. I work at, with Water Production. I'm a senior operator at the largest plant in the valley, and I am representing both the employees and the community and you. You, because your success and our success should be going together here. I mean, really, come on. But the strength and the quality of every successful organization is largely dependent on the people involved. We all know this. It's common. It's common knowledge. We are the core that you speak of, and we carry out the mission of the city. Look, the people I work with do this with loyalty. I mean, we involve ourselves, the best we've got, just like you do in your jobs, the best you've got, we do the same thing. We're working hard at doing that. We want to build a strong community here. Our group of talented, experienced professionals is proof that incentives work. They work. Incentives work. They were put in place, and that's why you have a lot of great people right now working in this city. We've earned what we've been promised. I've worked hard. We're not... It's not $100,000, Sal. I'm not going to get that. Well, I'm not going to go off on that right now. I think there has been a misrepresentation in general for a lot of the city of Phoenix employees, though. There are some who are getting that, who will get that. I'm not going to be one of them. Let me try to stay on track here. I want to make sure I get it out here. Look, incentives do attract and retain some of the best people, and they are effective. We teach, learn, and work together to boost quality in what we do. I would suggest this is common throughout the work groups within the city. Where would we be without a well-qualified workforce to provide drink and water and treat wastewater? Most of us are discouraged that as proposals continue to aim at taking more from us, both immediately and in future benefits. Please do not take us for granted. We're not the easy mark. Don't make it look like that. Really, that's how I feel. I mean, it's easy. Got the wages there, oh, they are living pretty good. We'll take a little bit off. We'll solve the problems. You guys have, and gal, ladies, have come up with ideas that could have solved this. I don't get it, frankly. And the structure program, let's fix it. Let's not talk about it. So I implore you to involve the community, not just 14,000 employees. This is not an employee problem. Is it completely an employee problem? But we're going to be paying for it. As the city grows, revenues, excuse me, revenues should increase as the city grows. City services will go up in demand. I would suggest we do have a spending problem. We would like a truthful audit of each department, make changes, and tough decisions. Better management might fill vacancies and still reduce expenses. You approve a large increase in pay for the city manager position. You stated this was necessary to attract and retain a well-qualified individual. This is a good idea. Why should it apply onto the city manager, though? I mean, we're not asking for that much, really. We believe that cutting or freezing city workers' wages and benefits will actually make the problems worse. As quality and qualified people leave the city employment, we will fail to attract the more qualified applicants, which will negatively impact, have a negative impact on the workforce. This is already beginning to manifest. Furthermore, city of Phoenix employment will become a training ground for people to work for a few years and move on. That's happened before. This is what, this is not what the people want, I would argue with you. I don't think they do. How can you say that you are not on our side? Are the services we provide more valuable than we are? I'm almost finished. Most of the public appreciate what we do and are on our side. You should be very concerned about the effect your decisions will have on your core, the very people carrying out the mission. Dig deeper and make tough decisions. Raise revenue. Spend more wisely. Talking about $46 million. Look, I have confidence that you all can do better. I mean, I know you're doing great, but there needs to be some kind of congruency here with this city, the way it is. If you really want to grow, which we all want to see that, you've got to have a good core workforce. Thank us by your actions and preserve the strength and integrity of that very workforce. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent. The next speaker will be Greta Rogers.
Mayor and council members attending this meeting, my name is Greta Rogers. I spoke strongly and unequivocally to you last week on this subject. My opinion has not wavered, not one half inch. You are ethically and morally bound to pay these people what you agreed you would pay them two years ago, plus incremental increases. You have yet to repay them, to restore to them 1.6 percent that was reduced from the 3.2 in 9/10. You still owe them 1.6. That was an agreement between you and all these people and many who aren't here and That is a moral and ethical and lawful obligation. It was done publicly. Now you want to cut 1.6 this year, plus 0.9 next year, and you still owe them 1.6. You have a total obligation now of 3.7 percent in 2016. Put that on your tab and plan for it. In addition, if you have any sense of honor at all and respect for the people of this city who are the nervous system and the spine that make it run, you owe them COLUS, Cost of Living Adjustment. And I peg it at 1 percent a year, beginning in '09 and forward. That's seven years. That's 7 percent, and that is modest. It has changed 1 to 1.2 to 1.3. I'm pegging it at 1. Your total obligation to them will be, where the hell is it? 3.7 and 7 is, and 7 percent is 10 point... I think it's 11.1 it comes out to. So put that on your, put that on your tab, and that's the goal for negotiation and not one cent less in 2016. You have dishonored these people. The morale in this city among the working people is as low as I have ever seen it. And I've been around a while, not just because I'm old, but because I'm insistent. This is a statement that was given to AFSMI 2384 guys. AFSMI this year is going to be, has agreed to reduce money to members who attend training via the MOU contract, additional training, $14,000. Eight hours unpaid holidays, two furlough days, 18, total 18 hours, beginning July 1. $2,530 for a total, this coming year, of $2,544,000. I hope you're proud you have screwed the workers.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rogers. Tyler Bennett will be next, followed by Michael Stoddard. Is Tyler Bennett here? Oh, good, good to see you. And then Michael Stoddard next, followed by Luis Feliciano.
Thank you, members of council. I am Tyler Bennett. I'm a heavy equipment mechanic with all my brothers and sisters in Unit 2. I'm a fairly new employee to the city of Phoenix, but I've been around the city for many, many years. My father was an employee of the city of Phoenix, and just from what I've known since the day I was born... I'm sorry, but we were once given the honor of being one of the best-run cities in the country. But that tells me we're not doing our, you know, the decisions we're making here aren't right. We should be getting it year after year after year. The money is out there. We're just spending it on the wrong things. The people that run this city, the people that work nights, that make sure the police cars make it to the incidents, that make sure your fire trucks make it to the burning buildings and saving babies from pools, you know, it's hard, it's easy to forget us, the people that don't ever see the light of day because we're, you know, off working in shops or making sure your lights turn on and your AC works. You know, it's easy to turn on that faucet and say, hey, you know, I got water. It's coming from, you know, it's just coming from the ground. But there's hundreds and hundreds of people that are making this city work, and if we continue to cut the wages, people aren't going to want to work here. I'm sorry. I took a pay cut when I came here. I took a 2 percent pay cut from a contractor that contracts for the city of Phoenix. I've tried to get a job here since I was 18 years old, and now you want me to take more cuts? I'm sorry. I don't think it's right. I think I'm at my two minutes.
Thank you very much. Michael Stoddard, then Mr. Feliciano, and then DeeDee Barker.
Wow. Hard to follow that. But I'll do my best. Mayor, city council. When people ask me what I do, a lot of times I tell them I do almost all the things my mother told me not to do. I work in traffic at night, in the rain, with electricity. I honestly like my job, and I believe I'm compensated fairly for it. Like my spouse, like most spouses, my wife always says, "Be careful when I leave for work," and I am, mostly because she tells me to, but also because even though it's not a particularly dangerous job, like many jobs within the city, it has its hazards, not the least of which is the fact that we work outside in the summer. I don't pretend that my job is any more dangerous than jobs like police or fire, but it doesn't pay as well, and the benefits aren't the same. I think that's fair as well. Like many of you, I chose my job based on the skills I have, the compensation I believe I'm worth, and, most importantly, the path I want to leave in life. Like many people, there are many jobs I wouldn't do for a million dollars, and some jobs I do for free. These are fair choices. We all make them, including you guys, and I don't think that my, any city job is more important or less important than mine, even if it pays more. What I don't think is fair is our leadership saying we should all bear the burden of a mishandled budget and that some departments or personnel should have to bear more than others after seating by the city manager. If we all do a little, no one has to do a lot. You have already demonstrated that you feel the employees should be taxed more than our citizens by looking for ways to reduce spending instead of pursuing other forms of revenue. That's a tax. No matter what you call it, it's a penalty being imposed on us for working for the city of Phoenix. Almost, you may or may not agree with taking a cut in your own salaries at least equal to or greater than what you're asking of the rank-and-file employees, and you may or may not agree to burden some departments more than others. But you will not convince me that across-the-board cut is not equal, that is not equal as fair. It sets a dangerous precedent, as Ms. Williams said, to future negotiations, and it creates discontent within the ranks of the employees, and it throws out the idea of seamless service within the city.
Thank you.
I live within my means. I don't need Sal's pity. I save what I can for retirement someday. I'm a resident. I'm an employee. I pay my taxes. I vote, and I expect to be treated fairly by my elected officials. I do not think that is too much to ask. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right. Mr. Feliciano, followed by DeeDee Barker, followed by Anthony Ruelis.
Mayor, I can take my time to Frankie Diaz.
That's perfectly fine. Mr. Feliciano, Luis Feliciano, are you here?
Here I am.
Ah, good to see you.
I want to thank everyone for being here. I want to thank everyone for being here, and I'd like to say that I don't really appreciate you forcing me to retire. I'm a single parent. I can't afford to stay here. For the few pennies that I'm going to save, I'm going to have to buy now healthcare. I mean, it's beyond me to know, to have this happen to me, that I'll be forced out of a job. And what's more incredible is that you guys are part-timers, and you're making more money As I see it, we're here, we're complaining, we're bitching, and nothing's going to change because that's the way it's going to be. I just hope that the people here see who's up there so they shouldn't be up there anymore. I am grateful for working for the city, but mostly for being in the union and having so many union brothers. Now, I'm almost ashamed to say that I belong to the city because it's obvious what's happening here. What was done on the top, we at the bottom are going to pay for this. And as I see it, it's a sad time for all of us. Us because we're going to be doing more with less and living a lifestyle that's going to be less than desirable, while the people who are making these decisions will continue to work and live their lavish lives. What can I say? I mean, there's really nothing to say, you know? We weren't given much of an alternative. Either pick this, or you're going to get less. I like to say that I'm proud of my brothers, and then I'm ashamed of you people. Have a good day.
Thank you very much, Mr. Feliciano. So Mr. Ruelis, could you just testify next? And then followed by Kevin Beard. Up to two minutes. Good to see you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. My name is Anthony Ruelis. I served eight years in the military proudly so people can make ignorant, uninformed comments about police. That was a cakewalk compared to now. This, this just sucks. Now I'm a regular taxpayer and a city employee who is still waiting on this $100,000 paycheck everyone's talking about. I have nine years with Water Services. I do a job that only a handful of employees do, eight to be exact. Out of those eight employees, this year, two are retiring, two are answering emails and invites to employment with other cities. And myself, who is thinking about re-enlisting in the military so I don't have to worry about how my kids are going to be fed or clothed. Yes, I'm aware of the sacrifices that I would have to make by separation from my family and friends, but knowing that, knowing they won't take money from me is a lot better than what they're doing here. You know, there, they tell me I'm doing a great job, and they show it. Here, it's, you're doing a great job, but, you know, we're going to have to take money from you. You know, someone messed up, you have to make up for it for their mistakes. Here, every year, it's take, take, take. That's three employees out of the eight who would be left to do technical duties required by these positions. All knowledge will walk out that door, and nothing would be done to stop them by voting to take their money. My division also has a section of 15 to 20 employees who make sure fire hydrants are where they're supposed to be, where they're, and working properly, not missing, so firefighters can do their job, what they do best, fight fires and save lives. Half of this section, half of that section are eligible and considering leaving because, like I said, it's take, take, take again. Please don't balance the budgets on the back of employees because it's not our fault that mistakes of millions of dollars were made on not our fault. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Name, next speaker is Kevin Beard. Good to see you. And then followed by Monica Pimentel. And then Mr. Beard, Stephen Carlson has donated his, some time, you see, about the four minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Mayor and council, I'd like to lend your ears a little bit and let you know what the talk has been going on the last three, four months since all this has been going on. But before I get started, I'd like to go back to the year 2011, when the city of Phoenix sat here and spent $400,000 on having a study on comparable wages, on our wages and benefits. And the report that came back, almost 100 percent was just right, flat, level. There was a few discrepancies. I'm with the Fleet Service Division as a heavy equipment mechanic, and we have service workers, too, and I think I can say in their behalf, thank you, that was well-spent money because they were underpaid and they got two extra steps out of that, so they appreciate that much. But now here I am, standing here, looking at a 4.1 percent... But now here, I am standing here looking at a 4.1% pay cut. And I'm not even going to include the cost of living. I'm just talking about the pay cut. Well, there's some people probably smarter than I was the first part of the year, because people's already leaving. I've seen and heard that people's gone to Tempe, Avondale, Goodyear, Peoria. I know one who went to Arizona State, and that's just in my small area. And here in the last month, with the negotiations that go on, there's a lot of people putting their resumes out. All they say is, "We had a 1.6." They were looking forward to getting that 1.6 back, probably not getting a raise. They would have been happy with that, and hell with the cost of living, just to keep us going. But now they're looking at this 4.1. You go two years down the road, I really don't think there's going to be very convincing to ask for a 4.1 to get us back where we are and then ask for our cost of living. I don't think it's going to happen, and this is what they're saying out there. So, they're already putting resumes out there. And come on, guys. City of Phoenix spent big bucks on quality training. I'm not talking trade school stuff. We had manufacturer training and stuff. We're losing a lot of good, quality workmanship, and it's going to hurt our services and the way we are producing and our work. It's just... It's just not going to be... It's not going to work out. And we're also looking at young people that just came in there, had six months to two years. They already took a cut in pay. You already heard one that talked about it. They have families, they got kids, and they're hoping to get this next merit raise and keep going, to try to get out from the hole and try to make a little something to feed the kids. Well, now they're looking at another pay cut, and they're going, "Well, shucks, I made more money outside before I came to the city." So, now they're thinking about leaving. When's this going to end? I was in here not too long ago, not to pick on you, Ed, but you elected a new city manager in, and of course, there was a big rebuttal because of the pay raise and all that, and I'm not here to say that, but the reason I bring that up is the comment that was made in the City Council when you were discussing this. And the comment made was that, in order to get a qualified, experienced person, you've got to offer competitive wages and benefits to attract that type of leadership. We're not attracting that anymore. We're having a hard time replacing the people that, in our vacancies now, by the time they do all the testing, background tests and all that, we're lucky to fill the vacancies we have. We're having difficulty now. Now, we're going to have this cut in pay. We're looking at people leaving, and I don't think anybody wants to come to the city. You've got to remember, just because you've got the wage and the benefits, I gave up a social life when I was younger, because I worked swing shift in graveyard. I gave up a lot, just like everybody else does. They have families. They give up their family life with kids, because they're working an evening shift, no different than the police officers or fire department. We give up a lot in order to provide the services we do, and we provide very good services. Well, all I want to say is, if we continue down this road, I can see where the disruption of services is going to happen, because you're not going to have the quality people anymore. I don't think you're going to be attracting anymore. It's... You've got people already looking outside for work. I have never seen this happen. I've been here for 26 years. It has never happened. Now, everybody's looking, saying, "Hey, there's going to be a turnover." It's already happened. It's a shame that it goes that far. Then they ask for cuts in our departments, year after year. We're down to dirt level right now. We can't do any more cuts. So, now they're talking about eliminating different shifts at different service centers. So, now we're going to have twice as many people on one shift with one foreman instead of two. We're not going to be very productive, and it's going to create a lot more stress levels. The foreman's already stressed out with what they got to do, and I can tell you for a fact that every day I can see the stress in my foreman. Every day, I look at him. And thank you for my time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Beard, for your testimony. Next will be Monica Pimentel, followed by Ryan McClure. Ms. Barker, who did you want to donate your time to? I apologize. Okay, perfect. Excellent. Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, I was here last week, and I asked you to negotiate. I don't know what the negotiations were. I hope that was something you actually considered and that you did. I actually just got a text from one of the daughters here, and she asked me, "Can you please tell the City Council that the future generation is not blind? They're ashamed to be the children of this panel." And to... They should be proud that their parents work for the City of Phoenix. That's from a 14-year-old. She's here, she's watching this. She doesn't want this to happen anymore. I don't want this to happen anymore. My... As my husband said, "These are our brothers and sisters here. Many of his coworkers have been to my home. We celebrate each other's families. I don't want to see anything go away. As Mr. Feliciano said, are you guys ready for the people walking out the door? Because they're not going to be able to afford to stay here. They're all going to be going because..." And what are you going to do, as... I'm sorry, there's someone else that said it. What are you guys going to do when there's eight people, when there should be 20, and you're going to be left with three? To be fixing the police cruisers, to be fixing the firefighter's trucks? We can't balance this budget on our backs. And in doing this, also, the unions... We're putting employees against each other. This is not right. We need to be fair. We need to be equal. We can't have one union group going against another union group. It's simply not fair. So, in closing, let's... I hope this works out well. I hope we're not here again next year, but I know we will be. I can hope against hope. Lastly, I want to say thank you to all the union leaders for all of your time. My husband's a steward, and he puts in more time doing union work at home. I'm proud of him. I'm proud of all the union leaders. So, to all of you, I applaud you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Pimentel. Ryan McClure, followed by Scott Naughton.
Mayor and Council, thank you for your time. I just want to discuss about some of the things that we do on a daily basis. I'm personally a heavy equipment mechanic. I keep those million-dollar fire trucks on the road, them SWAT trucks, running. You know, the services we do behind the scene are amazing. The training we have to go through to take care of this type of equipment is... It's unreal to learn the complex of this equipment these days. To continue to beat these people down is getting old. It is not the employees' fault for where we're at. So, to continue to take from them to fix the budget is not going to fix anything. I was attending a meeting today with staff discussing... They're extremely scared about the cuts that are going to be brought to our division. Closing two of the busiest service centers that have garbage trucks ready in the morning to save money is going to cost the city so much more. Without graveyard on those shifts, good luck having trucks. I'd like to see our vendors be there at 2:00 in the morning, getting those trucks ready for the morning. It won't happen. They work days. They've got privileged schedules. Us employees here at the city work around the clock to keep services running. Outsourcing is not going to fix these. Continuing to cut these employees, and as our other brothers and sisters talk about how many people are going to walk out the door, what are we going to do to make sure those services are there for the citizens? Because the way we're headed, this spiral is going to collapse the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. McClure. Scott Naughton, followed by Frankie Diaz.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Councilwoman Pastor has a question, please.
City manager, I would like to maybe a further review or make... Be aware of what this gentleman is speaking about. Thank you.
Mr. Naughton, please.
Thank you, City Council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager. When I... When I applied with the City of Phoenix, I went through a very stringent hiring process. It was harder than joining the military. Took me over a year to get hired. That's because the city vets its employees. They... They make sure that they're getting the right people on their staff. You don't see that in the private sector, Sal. As far as creating revenue, I'm pretty sure that the city has employees, people we pay well, to find ideas, revenue, brainstorming people. Maybe they're sitting on this board right now. I don't know. Okay? But I know I'm not one. It's not up to me to do that. Okay? People are paid well to do that. Sal, you're worried about being compared to Glendale. I'm worried about being compared to Detroit. Sal... Sal, I heard you say last week you're a numbers guy. I don't know, man. Your numbers are pretty skewed. I want to talk about the city manager's raise. You probably deserved the raise, Ed. There's no doubt. I just wish I didn't have to hear about it after what I have to do. The city has great people working for them. Okay? You really need to consider that. This is... What's being done here after a $285 million deficit only a mere five years ago and change, okay? And now we're panicking over $37 million. Okay? We want to cut the employees' pay even more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Naughton. Frankie Diaz, you were up next, and Ms. Barker was kind enough to donate her time to you.
Sorry about that. I'd rather hold it. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager, and staff, I want to thank you for your... For your time. You know, I heard from my brothers, my sisters, the police officers, the fire department. And we're trying to make things happen for the best. It doesn't seem to be happening. City Manager, I feel for you, because you've taken a position that the other city manager left, all that trash, and it's not your fault. And I just want to commend you. You know, we have electricians, they work very hard. Skill workers, maintenance. Forgive me, I'm trying to get my mind here. Solid waste equipment operators, street mains, I think I said that, but you have a lot of hard-working people, and they're not out there playing. They're working hard. Just ask the police, just ask the fire department. I commend the fire department. I commend the police office, because they do have a terrible, terrible, awful job, whether they're going to come home or not. Fired the same thing. But we... We're also in jeopardy, because I'm working out there in the streets. And like I told you once before, I was hit by a dump truck, and I was out for about three months on light duty. Now, I... I ask you guys in the council, with all due respect, find it deep in your heart, not to take away. We've worked too hard. I'm 69 years old in three months. I want to make 20 years. I only got... I'm going on my 19th year. And I work very hard out there, just as everybody else. I know that things are looking bad, but in the name of Jesus, find it in your heart for everyone, because we're all equal. And I don't have any... Thank you. I don't have any squams with anybody up there in the council, because I know you have a hard job. You have hard decisions to make, just as the city manager. But please, please, find it in your heart. Dig deep down in your heart. I'm in jeopardy. I'm going to probably lose my job. And if I do, so be it. But please, don't take away from these people. Is that four minutes? Please, don't take away from all these people that are hard-working people. I don't give their fire. I don't care if they're police. I don't care if they're city workers of maintenance, street maintenance, garbage disposal, and so forth. I thank you for your time.